Good afternoon. I'd like to call the December 11, 2012 City Council Meeting to Order. Please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
House.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
White.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Move on to public comment. We have quite a few speaker slips here. We'll start with Andrew Dimizio. It doesn't say chief, Andrew Dimizio, but chief, come on up.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Andrew Dimizio, Fire Chief. It was about a little over 38 years ago that I was a student at UCSB looking for a summer job, and I managed to land a job with the Forest Service as a seasonal. It was a little over 32 years ago that I was fortunate enough to be picked up by Santa Barbara City. And now, come Friday, I'm going to be ending my career in the fire service as the Fire Chief of Santa Barbara. And I wanted to come before you today to basically express my gratitude, my thanks for your confidence in me as the leader of the Fire Department. I wanted to say thank you to our community, their wonderful community, who is involved so heavily in the fire protection of our area. It's made my job as a Fire Chief so easy and remarkable. Actually, I shouldn't say it's been easy. It's been a challenge, but it's probably been the most rewarding challenge of my career. I want to say thank you to the City Administrator's Office and the fellow department heads. They've been a great group of professionals to work with. They took me under their wing and quickly got me up to speed in no time at all. And it's been a wonderful experience to learn from them. I want to say thank you also to the men and women of Santa Barbara City Fire Department, especially my management team. They're an incredible group of professionals. I became a battalion chief back in 2003 and was very fortunate to learn what it was like to be a Fire Chief even back then. This management team's doing a great job, and I hope they can continue some of the things that I started, in particular, the strategic plan. And I hope they can work on getting a standards of coverage document for our Fire Department. I'd like to see those things going, and I think we have the talent within House to do that, so I hope that continues. I'd also like to say the very special thank you to my administrative staff, another great group, who've kept me going and dotted the i's and done everything. And I'd also, my special thanks to my wife today, Terry Dimizio, who's with me. In the background, she's been there always, and you can't be a Fire Chief and be gone as much as I have over all the years and months for all the training and fires. My wife's kept everything going for my family and made it possible that I can provide this service to this city. So, thank you. Thank you all very much.
It should be us thanking you, Chief. Thank you very, very much, and wish you the best. Thank you for coming. Wayne Scholes will be the next speaker, and Mr. Pennington, you're giving your time to Mr. Scholes, so, Mr. Scholes, you have four minutes. That'll be followed by Kenneth Locke.
Yes, now that we finally have cameras and the police cars are going to get them, we'll be able to determine if citizens are making false claims against the police or the police are abusing their power against citizens. And I hope you'll pay attention to what I'm going to ask that the City Council do today. While I was in Oregon, I paid attention to what was going on in the City of Oregon and City Council up there, and one of the issues they had was abuse of power, both physical and in the realm of false arrests and false imprisonment, similar to some of the situations we're having here in Santa Barbara. Well, the City Council up there hired a company that does a nationwide search and study on physical abuse and abuse of power by police officers, and I think it was a five-year period, the last five years. And what they came up with was that over 75%, I think was the figure, of these claims of abuse of power, regardless of how the Police Department covered things up, or regardless how other agencies tried to cover things up, were blueprints for steroid abuse. And so what the City Council up there did is they got the police union together at their meeting, and they said, "We want to have random drug tests." Police officers said, "We don't have a problem with that. We're all for drug testing. We're against drugs." As soon as they said, "We also want steroid testing," the union went ballistic. Now, there's a reason why they went ballistic, because they must know that there's people abusing steroids in the Police Department. Now, I happen to be in Plumber and Pipe Fitters Union. We take drug tests all the time. We take psychological tests in certain high-security jobs also. Now, anytime we get injured on a job, or anybody within 10 feet of us get injured on a job, everybody has to take drug tests. And I think the City Council ought to look into that with the Police Department also, not only for the protection of the citizens, but the protection of police officers who aren't abusing the power or aren't abusing steroids. All you have to do is call the City of Portland, talk to the City Council, find out what company did that study, ask them if they would get that, because anybody that's lived in Santa Barbara for decades knows that what's going on in this city and the Police Department has never happened before. And the cover-up by agencies here in Santa Barbara, including the City Attorney's Office and the City Administrator and the District Attorney's Office, to protect officers so that the city supposedly doesn't have undue litigation, the same reason why Mr. Armstrong said that citizens are not allowed to see the reports that other agencies do on their complaints against police officers for abuse. Well, that smells like cover-up. It looks like cover-up, so it must be cover-up. And there needs to be citizens in this town that can believe that the best interest for the citizens is what's being upheld, as opposed to the so-called "protect the city" against litigation. We are the city. The citizens are the city. The employees are part of the organism that runs the city, but you are not the city. You can be replaced in a heartbeat. You can be replaced in a heartbeat, Mr. Wiley. The Chief of Police can be replaced in a heartbeat, just like the President of the United States can be replaced in one day. The people are the city, and it's about time that if we really care about citizens' rights and public safety, that we start doing every single thing we can to help them. And the way-
Your time's up, Mr. Scholes.
-to stop a problem is by prevention, not waiting till it's abused.
Kenneth Locke will be followed by Nancy McCready.
You can't.
Then you're next, Nancy McCready.
I'm ready.
Okay, then Bob is next. Bobby, you have four minutes, and then Craig Schallenberger.
Good afternoon. I want to hand out-
And before you start, I'm going to ask you not to hold up that sign during your-
Ann always gets to hold his.
He has a sign that's yay big, not a sign as big as that, so you can-
Here's some handouts. This is a petition drive that we're doing, a national petition drive. And it says President Barack Obama's quote, that after he was elected, that we need to get out of these wars and start nation-building in America. I would think that homeless is probably one of the top 10 things that we need to kind of work on. We need jobs. We need clean water, and we need to have our children and everyone well-educated so we can compete with everyone. We, the undersigned, want President Barack Obama, along with state governor and city mayors, that's Hugh Helene, to sign an executive order for America's homeless. And after they did the 10-year plan through Bush, there was about eight governors who signed an executive order to support the 10-year plan. We need to stop the hate language, because calling someone a transit is almost calling somebody the N-word. I was at the Natural History Museum last month, and Cam Sanchez said that the homeless crime is really about 1% of all the crime that is really happening in this community. So, there's a lot of propaganda and hate and fear, because the only thing we really need to fear is fear itself. They were basically saying, the person that kind of runs the mall over here, that, you know, homeless people are pretty nice and all. They're considerate, and there are a few that even we kind of label the kids in black as, although they're troublemakers. Well, everybody has to abide by the law, and if they break the law, then the law comes down on them. And unjust sleeping laws, at this point, Santa Barbara Police Department is still writing illegal lodging tickets. It's a state law, and so it goes to people, and they sit there and have to decide if they can fight it or not, and they kind of, oh, well, I go sleeping, but, and if you do fight it, they kind of kick it out of the court system. And instead, set up solutions such as a person could pay $200 a month or work 20 hours a month for a place to call home 24/7. There's no place like home. You can kick your heels three times and say it, and it's really true. I talked to a person the other day, and I was like, you know, on the streets, if that's all you have is just your backpack and stuff, it really gets on you, any of us. I've never really been homeless. I've been homeless two or three days in my life. We're out there and had to deal with that. It would just grind you up, you know? And that's what the situation is, really. So, if there's someplace that could be stable, and by an executive order, the President could say, "Hey, nationwide, let's start doing something positive." And in these places, no more than 20 people. You could take a house even, let's say $200 a month, or 20 hours' worth of work, but let's just say $200 a month, and if HUD put in $200, that would be $400 for each person, times six people in a three-bedroom house, that's $2,400, and they could have a house to live in. But there's all kinds of ways we could do that. We could even have RVers where they could stay 24/7 someplace and pay. Now, some people disagree with that, going, "Oh, we don't want to pay. It's free." Well, you know what? People could do that. That would be a great thing, to have someplace that you can be stable, or you could even donate 20 hours. People could sit there and even help other homeless people or do some other things. We need a national agenda for solutions, because all across this nation, cities are waging war against poor citizens. And we just talked about being on the streets, you know? Let's just say someone goes on the streets, they're okay for a month or so, but pretty soon it just wears on them. They maybe lose their car, they're on the streets. I know a friend who was, about eight years ago, was at the-
About eight seconds left.
Eight seconds?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Now, six.
And, you know, this has all started just in this little town, when the train came and the hobos came, so it's still going on in this town, and we need to, we're going to the farmer's market, and I'm going to kick my heels three times. One, two, three. There's no place like home. And I have my sign here, but I'll just read it real quick as I'm leaving.
Now, your time is up, Mr. Hanson.
Obama, please remember America's homeless. Stop the hate language. Stop the anti-sleeping laws. And on the other side, it says, "Please sign an executive order for America's homeless." You can sign this-
Okay, your time is up, Mr. Hanson.
-call, you can write, you can email the White House. Thank you.
Craig Schallenberger? Be followed by Dr. Johns, and then Kate Smith will be the final speaker.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Craig Schallenberger. I'm currently a commissioner on the Historic Landmarks Commission, and the reason I'm appearing here today is just simply to follow up on an email that I sent each of you announcing my intention and desire to serve a second term. Unfortunately, I was unusually called away on the three Tuesdays where the interview process was being held, and I just, I wasn't able to make it. It was very unusual, but, like I said in the email, I am available at any time in the future and will be more than happy to, once the next round of interviews comes around. If there's any questions, I'm glad to take those. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Johns?
I did my undergraduate at University of Michigan. No, I'm sorry. I did my graduate work at University of Michigan, PhD in psychology. My undergraduate, although I did it at Michigan State University, and I had a pre-law discipline that I tried to follow. I couldn't. I needed to explore. I needed to check out other disciplines. And the reason why I'm saying this is that right now, the Community College Student Success Task Force, they're making some recommendations now that students will not be able to explore. They will not be able to take recreation. They will not be able to take classes that they need to find options, need options. I had many options in my, you know, if they're taking too many classes, then I think it's very unjust, and I think that equal opportunity is not being resolved here. I think that, I think that the City Council here needs to look into this. You have a good relationship with the Santa Barbara School District, and discuss this with the district and with the Community College, the school, Student Success Task Force, because this is, this is a very, kind of evil omen coming down, and had the state not pay for Community College students. I think you need to look into this very carefully. Thank you very much, board members.
Kate Smith?
Madam Mayor and members of the Santa Barbara City Council, I've asked several times for a closed session hearing and for time on your agenda. Now, we are in a knock-down, drag-out conflict, aren't we? So, I'm asking you to attend a preliminary hearing to expose and document my legal abuse. That'll be on January 4 in Judge Hill's courtroom, Department 2. For the last 17 years, I have suffered the slings and arrows of outrageous fortune in that I have been retaliated against for my activism and my whistleblowing by the School District and by the government of Santa Barbara City and County. Last week's Independent had a story about Joan Esposito, World Renowned Dyslexia Awareness Resource Center Director. Thank you, Grant, for your acknowledgement. Joan of Dark sheaths her sword. The center is closing its doors. She's suffering with post-traumatic stress disorder, which is legal abuse syndrome. And I'd like to read from the article. Kate Smith, the irascible former school board candidate and semi-pro public commenter, nicknamed Esposito Joan of Dark, a clever pun that quips on Esposito's crusade-like approach to her work, but also gestures to the deep pain that can be evoked by learning disabilities. Several of Esposito's clients came to her on the verge of suicide. Some followed through. One of her more high-profile cases was Sarah Alvarado, who killed herself by standing in front of a train in 1995 after failing to graduate from Santa Barbara High School.
You need to wind up, please.
I will. In the same issue, there's an article about Hispanics being deported at an immoral rate, immoral. And I'm leaving you with Karen Huffers' CV. She wrote the book, "Overcoming the Devastation of Legal Abuse Syndrome: Linking Protracted Litigation to Post-Traumatic Stress Disorder," and she wrote, "Unlocking Justice." You will be subpoenaed to the stand.
Okay, your time is up, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Move on to the consent calendar. There's some items to read.
Item 2, introduction of Erosion and Sedimentation Control Ordinance, recommending that Council A introduce and subsequently adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, adding Chapter 2285 to the Santa Barbara Municipal Code relating to erosion and sedimentation control standards for construction; and B, adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara adopting the Building and Safety Division Erosion and Sedimentation Control Program. Item 3, adoption of ordinance for renewal of agreement to use recycled water, recommending that Council adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the renewal of an agreement between the City of Santa Barbara and Ealing's Park dated as of January 10, 2013, for the use and delivery of the city's recycled water at Ealing's Park. Item 4, resolution of intent to award a franchise agreement to Marborg Industries, Inc., recommending that Council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara declaring its intention to grant a 10-year exclusive franchise for citywide solid waste collection and disposal services in the city to Marborg Industries, Inc., a California corporation. Item 5, resolution authorizing execution of grant agreement in the amount of $1,889,299 with the State of California for low-impact development stormwater infiltration project, recommending that Council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director, or designee, to negotiate and execute an agreement and any amendments thereto with the State of California for the low-impact development stormwater infiltration project. And item 13, introduction of ordinance for 2012 to 2013 Police Management Memorandum of Understanding, recommending that Council ratify the memorandum of understanding between the City of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Police Management Association for the period of July 1, 2012 through December 31, 2013, by introduction and subsequent adoption of, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the renewal of an agreement between the City of Santa Barbara and Ealing's Park, dated as of January 10, 2013, for the use and delivery of the city's recycled water at Ealing's Park. Item 4, resolution of intent to award a franchise agreement to Marborg Industries, Inc., recommending that Council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara declaring its intention to grant a 10-year exclusive franchise for citywide solid waste collection and disposal services in the city to Marborg Industries, Inc., a California corporation. Item 5, resolution authorizing execution of grant agreement in the amount of $1,889,299 with the State of California for low-impact development stormwater infiltration project, recommending that Council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director, or designee, to negotiate and execute an agreement and any amendments thereto with the State of California for the low-impact development stormwater infiltration project. And item 13, introduction of ordinance for 2012 to 2013 Police Management Memorandum of Understanding, recommending that Council ratify the memorandum of understanding between the City of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Police Management Association for the period of July 1, 2012 through December 31, 2013, by introduction and subsequent adoption of, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara adopting the 2012 to 2013 Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Police Management Association.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. Any items that need to be taken off, or, yes? Or is there a motion for? No.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to make comment on item 4, as well as on item 10.
Okay. And Mr. Rouse?
Item 5, please.
Item 5, okay. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go in order, item 4, which was already read, I believe. That is the franchise agreement to Marborg. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have plans to travel on the 29th of January, and so I've, while we're, this contract appears to be, to have come, to be coming together satisfactorily, I, since it is one of the largest, it is the largest contract that comes before this council, I would appreciate the opportunity to be there for that, in case there is a substantial discussion. So, I'm asking that that item be postponed one week to the 5th of February, instead of the 29th of January.
Okay. Do we need a motion to do that, or is that just something we can do through your office?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, the resolution that's before you actually specifies the date of January the 29th as the date when you intend to hold a hearing, and so my recommendation would be that you amend that ordinance to read February the 5th, and then we would just delay the process. You can still pass the action today. It would just delay the process one week, and we've, I've talked with the staff, and delaying it a week doesn't create any problems in terms of the implementation.
Okay. And Marborg knows of this?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Maybe we should just vote on this separately, just to keep it clean? Any, so, so item 4 is amended. We want to amend the resolution to make it, want to get the date right, February 5?
That's correct.
Okay.
So moved, Madam Mayor. Second?
Moving second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's item 4. And then-
And then item 10 is the other one.
Right. Why don't we do, we just go in order, Mr. Rouse, item 5, and that is the stormwater, did we read that one? Yes, you did. This is about a grant application agreement for the stormwater infiltration project. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question for Mr. Benson. And as I understand it, we're getting kind of the double benefit, because we're going to be redoing parking lots that would have to be redone maintenance-wise in probably the near future anyway. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse? Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And I know that the McKenzie Park was a pretty remarkable project. I have a question about the actual function, though, in terms of long-term, because clearly it's meant to filter and to keep certain kinds of solids and heavy metals and whatnot out of the creeks. What happens at some point? Do these solids, hydrocarbons and whatnot, build up? And if they do, what happens then? Do we somehow collect them, or can we get to them somehow and maintain those lots?
That's a great question, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Rouse, the hydrocarbons and the other pollutants that we're collecting down there are actually broken down by microbes in the, that attach themselves to the aggregate that's underneath the pavers, as well as in the soil.
So, and would that, would that happen naturally on an unpaved surface?
Yes.
More or less? Okay. And then, well, that actually answers my second question about future maintenance costs, whether or not it's going to be park and rec or a creeks budget item. I assume it's back to park and rec after that.
Yes, although, since these are new designs, we're working out maintenance, so in the short term, the Creeks Division is covering maintenance costs that are, that are anything different than existing maintenance. For example, at McKenzie Park, one of the, one of the things we're trying to determine is, is how much sweeping of the parking lot is necessary to keep them from getting clogged, for example. So, we're using the existing maintenance routine that the Parks Division has been doing for years at McKenzie Park. It may be that we may find that there's some additional maintenance. If there is, Creeks Division will cover the cost of that maintenance.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have no need to vote on this separately, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So, item number 10, if you could read, item 10?
Contract for Construction of the Corporate Yard Well Replacement Project.
Okay, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I have a question for Ms. Bjork. And I wasn't able to make the Water Commission meeting on Monday, or to follow up with Ms. Bjork on this, before this meeting, but, low 20 years ago, the, there was great concern about the use of this well and the field of wells in this area and further south that were aggravating saltwater intrusion. And I know that there's been a lot of study of that, but I was, I was surprised to see that, there are now two wells in relatively short proximity to one another that are going to be pulling out of the aquifer in this area. And I wanted to get some feedback, even if it's not today, from water staff about the state of that study of saltwater intrusion and how the city's strategy has improved over previous, that previous era, when we were, I think, needlessly causing that intrusion.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Councilmember White, I'm Rebecca Bjork, Water Resources Manager. Councilmember White, the wells in the downtown aquifer are in close proximity to the ocean and also in a confined aquifer, which means that they, they operate differently than in an unconfined aquifer, which aggravates saltwater intrusion. So, you're absolutely right on that part. We've been working and continue to work with the USGS on a three-dimensional model to optimize the way that we can use that groundwater basin so that we can work within the sustainable yield. And we interpret that to mean taking out the water that can be replenished in a given year. So, what we're trying to do is manage the interface between the groundwater basin and the ocean so that it stays where it is or continues to move out. However, in periods of drought, we would expect to draft more water out of that basin in order that we could make up for other shortages. So, we would expect in those situations to cause some saltwater intrusion into the basin, and at that point, it's a matter of managing how far it comes in so that it doesn't adversely affect water quality in future years. And we would then rest that basin after the drought to allow, to try and get the, the interface to move back out to the ocean. And that's what we've experienced in the period since the most recent drought of '89, '92.
And there, no doubt, is a plan in place, and maybe one that's evolving in concert with USGS, to, to do the, make the best use of the groundwater.
That's correct, and it's all part of the long-term supply plan that we also went through last year, and basically- And basically, in a nutshell, we're going to change the way in which we use that aquifer and use it more consistently at a lower level throughout the year. In the past, we used to pump it hard for shorter periods of time, and that aggravates the intrusion versus letting it rest or taking it at a low level at a more consistent time helps us to mitigate intrusion.
And are there not wells that have been planned, and maybe one that's been built that's further away from the coast in order to, to lower that impact? And are there plans for more such wells?
The, it's one basin, so it all operates basically as one hydraulic unit, so they will, having the wells away from the coast does help mitigate to some extent, but not completely. And unfortunately, the best producing part of the basin is closest to the, is the thickest closest to the coast, so it's, it's a balance. In addition, these four wells go to the well treatment plant that's currently under construction. The water quality in this basin is such that it really does need treatment, so the capital cost of building wells further away from the well treatment plant is inflated quite a bit by the need to put the infrastructure in place to get the raw water to the well treatment plant. So it's really a balance of managing the water supply, managing the capital costs, and making sure we have adequate production, particularly for periods of drought.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Just a quick question, so I understand, with the depletion of this particular aquifer, which you said is confined, does that, as it were, draw in saltwater, and that's when we have intrusion?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, that's correct. Right now, the, the pressure head of the aquifer pushing against the ocean keeps the saltwater out. As we pull that back, saltwater has an opportunity to come in. We can monitor that and keep track of where it is, and we're refining our ability to look at that through this solute transport metal that we're developing, so we'll be able to better manage it. But it, it's just a function of using this aquifer up against the coast.
I understand, so, and that, that aquifer is replenished by natural sources, groundwater, et cetera?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay, do we have a motion for the rest of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Moved in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, move on to item number 15.
Annual wastewater collection system report.
Okay, Ms. Bjork again. Just to be clear for how this is going to work, we'll have a brief staff presentation, then, I see Kira Redman here from Channel Keeper, you have up to 20 minutes, as long as, up to that period of time, you'll see the timer up there, and then public comment, and then any comments or questions from us, or questions we can do, I guess, as we go. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council, I, I'm again Rebecca Bjork, Water Resources Manager. I have Chris Toth, the Wastewater System Manager, with me today, and I'm happy to be here to present what will be the first of an annual report to the council on our collection system operations. The purpose of this presentation is to provide you some background and performance history of our wastewater collection system. We want to tell you about the management practices that we've been developing and implementing in the past year, year and a half, update you on the work that we have completed during that period of time, and tell you about the work that we're planning for the coming year. So just to give you some background system information, the system was, begun to be constructed in the 1890s. It was not, we don't still have infrastructure from the 1890s, but that was about when they started putting pipes in the ground to take sewage, and at that time also stormwater, away from homes and businesses and generally down to creeks or the beach. At this time, of course, it runs through a treatment plant, and it is just wastewater. We have 257 miles of collection system pipe, and we have nine lift stations. Most of the collection system is a gravity system, but we do need lift stations in low areas like at Henry's Beach where there's a lift station to lift wastewater from the western portion of the system up to the top of the mesa where it can flow by gravity again. So the lift stations are a critical component. This is a big part of the reason we're here. This is our five-year spill history going back to 2008, and you can see that in the 2008, 2010 period where we were averaging about 40 spills per year, which was a lot more than we wanted to be having. The, the only good news is that they were generally small and able to be contained, but this isn't, that wasn't representative of good operation. So in 2010 and 11, we started putting in place systems and management practices to address this problem, and you can see that really, starting in the second half of 2011, we started to have really good success in decreasing our spill level and got it down to 12 spills in 2011. We've had a slight uptick in 2012. We think we understand some of the reasons for that and are working to mitigate and eliminate that so that we can get, drop the spill level down again. But regardless, it's a lot better than we were two years ago. I wanted to give you a sense of how we're performing within our region, and our region is the central coast region of the Water Quality Control Board, which is sort of Santa Cruz down to Ventura region. What I've selected here is all collection systems with at least 50 miles of pipe. You can see in the period of 2007 to 2010, this orange bar is us, we, we are up there, we're not performing very well, and we were averaging about 13 spills per 100 miles of pipe. That's to equalize it, so you're looking at a similar performance metric there. In 2011, 12, we've been successful in dropping down significantly. We're still higher than we'd like to be with six miles, an average of six spills per 100 miles of pipe, but we're heading in the right direction. Important to understanding how to address and, and prevent spills is understanding why they're being caused. And for the City of Santa Barbara, our predominant cause is roots. There are a number of sources of roots into our sewer system, they can be dislodged by private plumbers cleaning a private sewer line, they can grow into our system from a private lateral, or they can grow in our system either through cracks or in manholes. We have had four spills from debris, that's typically sand and grit that moves into the system. These are small pipes, you know, most of our pipes in our system are six and eight inches, and we have four-inch pipes, so it doesn't take a lot to build up to cause a blockage of a pipe. We've had two spills from grease, one of those was related to a restaurant discharge, the other was related to a trailer park. High density of, of properties on a small line probably contributed to that. I think it's important for our population to know that management of kitchen grease, particularly cooking grease, is important to our sewer system. Grease in the sewer system works like cholesterol in your arteries. It, it clogs the lines and eventually causes a blockage. So if you're cooking at home and have grease, pour it into a disposable container, let it solidify and throw it away. Don't wash it down the drain, you may clog your system or ours. And then we had four spills caused by other, and I'll talk about those in just a minute. Unfortunately, our most recent spill had some adverse consequence in that we had to close Leadbetter Beach. The spill initiated on December 2nd, we were told by the reporting party that she observed it at about 2:12 in the afternoon. Unfortunately, it wasn't reported to us until 8:00 the next morning. You can see, this is a picture of the spill that next morning, which would have been when it was flowing harder, because that's a high, a peak flow time for us. I think the reason that it wasn't reported sooner was that it's less obvious when the pavement is wet that the system is actually spilling. The wastewater flowed down the curb to a storm drain and discharged out over a point to Leadbetter Point. We did notify Public Health, we immediately closed the beach and posted the beach to try and prevent contact, but that was an unfortunate spill for us. That spill was actually caused by roots growing into our system from a private lateral that had blocked our system, so. The other causes are a little bit more difficult to characterize. We had one which was caused by a private contractor during a private construction project where they left a sewer plug in the system which subsequently blocked our system and caused a spill. April 7th was a broken sewer main. The 28th was another private contractor working on a development where they burst a water main that washed a lot of sand, debris, and other material into our system, causing a blockage. And November 10th, we had a contractor working on part of our system where they left their tools in the manhole they were working on, and that caused a blockage. So those are the other, those are much harder to prevent because they're really mistakes. This shows the spatial distribution of the spills, and you can see they're pretty randomly located, which is one of the things that we're working to develop practices and, and information to help us better project how to operate the system to prevent spills when they're dispersed like this. It's not like we have a concentrated area of problems, they can happen throughout the system. So I want to talk about some of the management practices that we're working to put in place. We have relied heavily on consultant support to help us to get these management practices developed and implemented in a timely manner. Although sewer system maintenance isn't really rocket science, it does require a degree of skill and of technical expertise, and it can be fairly complex. We are also very reliant on information technology systems to help us manage all the information that we need to develop and manage in order to appropriately address and prevent spills. So to that end, we've been working with Brown &amp; Caldwell, an engineering company, who's been working with us to develop the management practices, document them, help us implement them, which means training us, putting the systems in place to, to manage them, developing the information technology backside to manage the information so that it's appropriately being used in these systems. And I'm going to talk about each of the systems so you'll have a sense of what they are. We've also worked with an engineering firm that did a hydraulic model of the system to look at our capacity, to evaluate if and where there are capacity issues that need to be addressed by expanding the system. And then we worked with a technical field trainer to work with our field staff to, to teach them and train them in field maintenance techniques to improve the effectiveness of their cleaning and other maintenance practices in the system. In developing the best management practices, the first one that I want to talk about is our spill response and reporting plan. This is what we do in the event of a spill, and it's really an important part of our system management because finding out what has caused a spill is really critical and important to helping us put in place measures to prevent future spills that might be caused by a similar type of occurrence. But also, it's important in making sure that we are accurately capturing and reporting information both to the regulatory agencies and to the public in a timely manner so that we can help protect against public health hazards. So we have upgraded and refined our spill response and reporting procedures and put those procedures in place. We've worked to improve our cleaning program plan, and the picture to the right is what we call a root tail, and it's roots out of our system, it's what we're trying to prevent. It's a particularly large one, I must say, but we, the cleaning program is actually very complex. We are working with our field crews to get information on an asset-by-asset basis, which means pipe segment by pipe segment, about the condition of that pipe when they go out and clean it. So they will go out and clean the pipe, and they will put a basket in the downstream manhole, they will find, look and see what they're getting back, and then that information is translated into our information system to document our asset management program, and it helps to project when we next need to go out and clean that pipe. So this is part of what Brown &amp; Caldwell was working with us on, but also the technical trainer, because getting consistent interpretation of that information is important to making sure that it gives good information about when to next go back. We also, in our cleaning program, do something called proofing, where we run a cage through the line after we've cleaned it to make sure the cage can pass through. That does a couple things, it tells us the clean, the pipe's been adequately cleaned. It also lets us know if there are any structural defects like significant sags in the pipe or laterals that are sticking into the pipe that could cause an obstruction, or roots that weren't adequately cleaned. So all of that helps us get information about the pipe condition and cleaning needs that we can put into our information system database and use to project future need.
Madam Mayor, what was that word you used? Proothing?
Proofing, proofing, sorry.
Can you spell it?
P-R-O-O-F-I-N-G, to sort of, thank you. Guess, prove that it's clean. This is a map of the, the miles of pipe that we cleaned in the last year, and it's color-coded, predominantly green. We cleaned 114 miles of pipe, but we did 161 miles of pipe cleaning. The difference is pipes we cleaned more than once. So the colored sections that are up there and are hard to spot are pipes that we've cleaned up to four times. The next thing that we're working on is our closed-circuit television inspection, and this is a program, we have sort of two components to it. Currently, this is a picture of our CCTV truck that we use pretty much diagnostically. After we've had an incident like a spill or trouble cleaning a line or unusual information coming out of the line cleaning, we'll go out and look at the line to see what information we can get from the CCTV that can inform how we might respond to those situations in the future, or whether there's work that needs to be done on that line. We are moving into doing a system-wide assessment of our pipes, which is a slightly different intent, which is going out to look at the condition of the pipes, both for structural purposes and for condition, cleaning purposes, so we can help us to prioritize cleaning and to prioritize pipe replacement. So we're going to, we're excited to be starting in on that. We've developed a refined, we've had a fats, oil, and grease management program. This is a program predominantly oriented towards restaurants where we go out to make sure that the food handling approach in the restaurant is appropriate, the food's being scraped to food waste, not to the drain, because the drain has a lot, the food tends to have a lot of grease on it, and that there are operating grease interceptors or grease traps at the restaurant being properly maintained to prevent grease that might get into the drain from going through the drain and into the collection system. We also do public outreach in areas of residential areas if we see an increased amount of grease in the system. Sometimes high-density areas can have increased grease just because there's more people per line, and, so we work to try and target those areas as well. So we've upgraded and implemented increased procedures for this. Again, we're using our database to manage this information and to help us to plan and prioritize restaurant inspections. All of this is being managed and brought together through an information technology governance plan. We have a number of computer systems that we're using to manage this information, link it, and present it in ways that we can analyze and interpret it. We have the Cartograph, which is our asset management program, and by that it means we, for every pipe segment or every piece of, of infrastructure that we have, we have information about that asset, the age, the material, the depth, that kind of information, and we add into it the condition findings from cleaning, from CCTV, other information that might be relevant to managing that asset. The fats, oil, and grease program is also managed here. Sewer lateral inspection program, we still have an sewer lateral inspection program, and in the last two years, we had 170-some sewer laterals inspected. So we manage all that information there as well, helps us to understand what the condition of that private part of our infrastructure is doing, and then we keep control of our spill activities in this system. All of it is linked to our GIS system so that we can view the data spatially and create maps which help us to analyze it, also helps us to do an efficient deployment of resources in terms of planning for cleaning. We can do a regional, figure out which pipes in a particular region need to be cleaned, and then use that, that resource effectively. And then the last system we have is, we call POSUM, it's the Pipeline Observation System Management. The CCTV data that we develop isn't just a tape of the sewer system, it's actually technical information related to the condition of that pipe. It tells you where laterals enter, what the condition rating of the pipe is, what the maintenance rating of the pipe is, and we need the specialized software that can talk to our GIS system and can also store the information and the associated videos so that we can use that for prioritizing pipe maintenance and pipe rehabilitation. Important part of our best management practices is the capital improvement program. There are a number of components to that program. We have a capacity assurance program, that was the hydraulic capacity that we did to make sure that we have enough ability to transport flows in our system, and we look at that four ways. We look at current average day, current wet weather, and then we also look at it to see if we have future average day and future wet weather capacity. So we've got a sense of all of that in our system, and again, that information is put into our database and linked into our GIS system. We have a list station enforcement condition assessment, we just recently completed that work with the aid of our consultant. They went out and did an assessment of all our lift stations, made a list of work that needs to be done, prioritized that work, and gave us suggestions about what priority to do that work. Fortunately, our lift stations are in good condition, and there's no major work needed there, but we will be going forward with a program of routine maintenance to upgrade and make sure that we've got good maintenance at those lift stations. We've had a longstanding program of annual rehab and repair, council goals of 1% per year, that's been in place for over 20 years. We continue that program. And we have an exfiltration abatement program plan, which is new, which is to try and target pipes that because of their proximity to storm drains have a potential for water to leak from them, filter through the soil, and potentially leak into a storm drain. We found, in, within the system, we've looked pretty hard working with Creeks, and we've found two incidences where this was occurring. We're not aware that it's a broad or widespread issue, but we have a lot of old pipes in the system as well, so we've decided, working with Channel Keeper, to prioritize these pipes and try and get two miles a year of these pipes rehabilitated to eliminate any potential for this leakage from one system to another to occur, and so we're, we're working to prioritize that workload. And then all of this information and documents that we've developed have been rolled up into a sewer system management plan, which is actually a plan that we, we develop and implement for the regional board, but is also the basis of our operation for our system. So that's, all of these component parts go into that. This is a map of our capacity evaluation. This is a map of the modeled capacity evaluation, and what I really want to call your attention to, colors never show up as well as they like them to, this red is where we would see that there was a capacity issue that the model projected, that when we go out in the field to see whether or not the that when we go out in the field to see whether or not the field operations confirm that, it would show up here as a red pipe. There are no red pipes. And in fact, in 2010, we had a big storm, and the way they rate storms is on the projected return frequency, so the bigger the storm, less frequently you expect it to happen. And we were planning, trying to plan to make sure we don't have a spill within a 10-year storm. We actually had about a 17-year storm in 2010, and we had no spills. So that's a good verification of this model. This model's still a very useful tool for us, because it shows us the pipes that are best opportunities for expanding capacity as we do work on the system in the future. So if we're doing work on a pipe that has a potential capacity issue, it's a good opportunity to conjunctively improve that pipe and expand it at the same time. So we've done a lot of work in 2012, as you can see. All of these plans, really, I'm, it's fairly easy to describe, but a lot of backwork that goes into it to really make them work and to make sure that the information management to support the implementation of the plan is adequate. We also conducted a survey to, in order to evaluate the proximity of sewer systems to storm drain systems, we needed to improve our survey data. We did an extensive survey of thousands of points and cataloged that information, so that we'd be aware of where our sewer lines are close to our storm drains. We inspected all of the pipes that are larger than 20 inches. We have pipes, our biggest pipes are 42 inches, we're using CCTV. That's very good news. We found very little concern, there are no structural issues. We completed an improvement on Conejo Road, which is, as you know, an active slide area, so managing rigid infrastructure in moving earth is a challenge. So we made improvements there to improve our stability and security in that area. We have planned and bid a project so that we can quickly move to construction in 2013 to construct an accelerated abatement. This is the accelerated pipe replacement for those pipes that are in proximity to storm drains. We're planning to do about two miles of pipeline in the Laguna Channel. I have a slide on that in a minute. And in 2012, we repaired or rehabilitated four miles of pipe. This rehab and repair is a fiscal year slide, and so you can see that in fiscal year, the funding for fiscal year 12 actually included eight miles of rehab and repair. So we've done a lot of rehab and repair in the very recent, recent history. 2013 plans to be at least as busy as 2012, so we're bracing, but we are conducting CCTV of 25 miles of pipe, and we have prioritized that pipe, and I'm going to talk about that briefly. We will complete the two miles of pipe that's in proximity to storm drains, and we've isolated the Laguna Channel area for that work. We will complete 2.6 miles of additional pipe rehab and repair, but that will be prioritized based on the information we get out of the CCTV survey that work that we're planning for the beginning part of the year, as well as other information we've already compiled. We will continue to implement the lift station programs that I talked about, making sure that we're maintaining and renewing the lift stations, and we have a number of special projects. And the picture to the right, it sort of illustrates some of the complexity. This is a storm drain support in a creek that is becoming severely at risk, and so trying to make sure that we can maintain this infrastructure without having other adverse impacts is really a challenge. It just illustrates some of the smaller elements just one section of pipe can present. That's Rattlesnake Creek Crossing. We're working to replace another line that goes across the bridge at Camino de la Luz. It's up by the Lighthouse Point Park. There's a sewer line on a bridge there that we're going to replace. We have, we're going to be assessing the infrastructure around the lot and trout development, because they're doing some improvements there, and it's a good opportunity to make sure that the rest of the infrastructure in that area is all in good shape and adequately sized. This is a map of the CCTV work that we'll be doing, and we have prioritized pipe that is in the right-of-way and in proximity to storm drains. I mentioned that we are doing Laguna Channel, and I'll talk about that just a sec, but so you can see there's none there, but this is really looking at a lot of the rest of our watersheds. And then in the subsequent year, we'll look at additional pipes in proximity to storm drains, so we can get a good sense that there aren't potential problems there. This is isolating the Laguna Channel area, so that is highlighting this area here, and these little green lines, there aren't too many of them, represent almost two miles of pipeline. And once we've completed this rehabilitation, all of the pipes in this watershed will have, that are in proximity to storm drains, will have been rehabilitated with seamless plastic pipes, so eliminating the opportunity for any leakage from one system to the other. And so with that, rather quickly, that if there are any questions, or I'd be happy to answer them after the public presentations.
Great. Why don't we move to Ms. Redmond's presentation?
I have a few slides.
Okay. Get in here.
Kiera Redmond, Santa Barbara Channel Keeper. I wanted to start out by informing you that I was not notified about this meeting until last Thursday, which gave me just three business days to prepare. I asked staff for more time, but the request was denied, nor was I provided with any information about the presentation that we just heard on which to base my comments. So this short notice and lack of information provided unfortunately perpetuates a pattern of uncooperative communications, and I wanted you to be aware of that. Despite the short notice, however, here I am. The purpose of my presentation is to provide comments on the status of implementation of our consent decree, and I'm sorry to say that Channel Keeper's view of the city's performance in 2012 with regard to reducing sewer spills and meeting its obligations to repair and replace exfiltrating sewers is that it's far from adequate. Next slide, please. As you're well aware, the city agreed to settle Channel Keeper's Clean Water Act lawsuit in this past March. That agreement is memorialized in a legally binding court-enforceable consent decree, which requires, among other things, that the city develop and implement an exfiltration abatement program to deal with the insidious problem of pipes that are exfiltrating sewage into storm drains which lead to our creeks and beaches. It also requires the city to repair or replace over and above the existing 1% per year capital improvement program, two miles of additional pipes that have a high risk of exfiltration each year, or spend up to $900,000 per year striving to achieve this goal. Next slide, please. Unfortunately, however, the city has reported to Channel Keeper that it repaired only 0.64 miles of high-risk pipe this year, and will expend only $478,000 on these efforts. In fact, the city will only spend $223,000 on actually repairing and replacing high-risk pipe. The remaining $254,000 is actually apparently being spent on surveying and other tasks to identify high-risk pipes. This contradicts the city's claim earlier this year that it had already identified high-risk pipe in the Laguna Channel watershed and would repair them this year. We do not dispute that surveying is an important step in overall collection system management and may even be necessary to identify high-risk pipes for repair. However, surveying and other tasks are distinct from the actual pipe repair and rehabilitation the city promised in the consent decree. This, in Channel Keeper's view, constitutes a clear violation of our consent decree and further delays cleaning up Santa Barbara's creeks and beaches. Next slide, please. In addition to dealing with exfiltration, a second core element of our settlement agreement is the reduction in the number of sewage spills. Repeatedly throughout the settlement negotiations, the city assured us it would have no problem continuing to reduce spills, as it did in 2011, to an all-time low of 12. Next slide, please. Despite these assertions, however, the city steadfastly argued for substantially higher spill performance standard for 2012, 18 to be exact. In the spirit of compromise, Channel Keeper agreed to spill goals for the life of the agreement that are higher than we think the city can and should have. The law requires zero, but we agreed to 18 to accommodate your staff's demand for some cushion while fine-tuning the program to meet other requirements of the consent decree. Next slide, please. Now here we are with the 19th spill of 2012 occurring last week, with nearly a month yet to go until the end of the year. Worse, a several-thousand-gallon spill that closed the one public beach in Santa Barbara where people surf, swim, and paddleboard on a daily basis. It goes without saying that those people and the rest of the citizens of Santa Barbara, not to mention tourists, beachfront business owners, Channel Keeper, and undoubtedly you as well, are dismayed by this occurrence. Next slide, please. Contrary to the desire you have expressed to spend money fixing the problems with your sewage system instead of on lawyers, the city continues to waste money on outside counsel and take extreme and hyper-technical legal positions instead of working cooperatively. Over the past six months, we have reviewed and provided comments on various modifications of the city's collection system management strategies and programs required under the consent decree. At each stage, we noted that the overall point of these modifications was to ensure the city's program is designed and implemented to achieve the SSO reduction standards. Inexplicably, none of the management strategies included reference to the SSO performance standards or explained how the strategy would ensure the city would meet the standards. Upon receipt of our comments, the city went back to Brown and Caldwell, who obtained a letter explaining how the program or strategy would achieve the desired results. The simple thing would have been to include this explanation with the deliverables in the first place, avoid needless back and forth between lawyers, and instead spend time and money on collection system management and spill prevention. Similarly, when we became aware that the city would not fulfill its promise to repair or replace two miles of high-risk pipe in 2012, we contacted the city to discuss a solution to remedy this breach of the consent decree. We asked whether the city had a sensible explanation for not fixing the pipes, and whether we could work together to fashion a modification of this consent decree to ensure the city made up the difference in future years. Rather than engaging in a meaningful way, the city's outside counsel wrote more letters, arguing that the city's only obligation under the consent decree is to spend money until it reaches the city's overall spending cap, regardless of whether it completes the tasks required by the consent decree, including meeting the agreed spill standard and the agreed repairs to high-risk pipes. That is not how the consent decree is structured, and is certainly not in line with the spirit of the decree, which prioritizes fixing the city's oldest pipes that pose the greatest threat to water quality and minimizing sewage spills. The city's approach continues to be to pay lawyers to argue needlessly over technicalities. These lawyers have written Channel Keeper nine letters in the past five months, with six of the nine refuting our recommendations. In the meantime, the city has not met its obligation to fix high-risk pipes with its 19th SSO of 2012, and it has not met the SSO performance standard. Both of these failures are in violation of the consent decree, plain and simple. Next slide, please. Since the city failed to meet the required SSO performance standard of 18 this year, it is required pursuant to this consent decree to formulate an SSO reduction action plan designed to achieve compliance with next year's SSO performance standard of 15. We do not want to continue down the path we've been on, one where the city does nothing more than what it believes is required under extreme interpretations of the consent decree and wastes valuable resources on lawyers. Therefore, I beseech you to direct your staff to engage in more productive dialogue with Channel Keeper, so we can come to agreement on how we're going to bring the city back into compliance with the consent decree. First, this means putting forward a meaningful SSO reduction action plan, one that clearly explains how the city will meet its obligations of no more than 15 spills in 2012. Second, we request an offer by the city to explain how it intends to make up the 1.34 miles of high-risk pipe it failed to repair or replace this year over the remaining four years of the settlement's term. I sincerely hope this is the route that you choose moving forward. I hope to work more cooperatively with the city to make sure we do a better job of managing the sewage collection system and reducing sewage spills. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, we'll move to public comment. Ms. Hauser, and you have James Hawkins, I see, right next to you. So you have four minutes, Ms. Hauser.
Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, Hillary Hauser from Heal the Ocean. I'm blown away by this whole presentation, what has gone on without one mention of sewer laterals, which is what caused the lead-better spill and what also is more than half of a sewer system. In response to this spill, Heal the Ocean was contacted by Hannah Beth Jackson, Senator-Elect, to figure out what the state can do to get a handle on the issue of sanitary sewer overflow, SSO. So we're now conducting research into this, the contribution of defective private laterals to SSO.
I'm going to hold on just a second, Ms. Hauser. You had some slides you wanted to show. You sure? Okay, go right ahead.
And the letters you have, I had emailed you yesterday. Ms. Bjork's report talked about 170 laterals that were viewed. We, Heal the Ocean, has in the past been very involved in the city's establishment of the successful SLIP program, and so we, in that process, we talked about ordinances, inspecting the whole city by grid, and the inspection of laterals as a point of sale, most of which didn't go over, but it's been a successful program. We commend the city for that. However, now that we're getting into this area, we feel, and we've told Senator-elect Jackson, that the issue of sewer laterals has to be dealt with in a stronger measure, and like ABA 85 established the Regulation of Septic Systems, we've got to get something going on sewer laterals. To speak generally to the problem of SSO, Santa Barbara is not alone in trying to find an innovative solution to this issue. According to EPA, it's a nationwide problem between 23,000 and 75,000 SSO events per year in the United States. First slide, most common reported causes, EPA, to SSO events are blockages of some sort, which we've seen, followed by wet weather, inflow, and infiltration, INI. Second slide, EPA estimates that grease is responsible, as you've seen before, nationwide. It's a little bit different than Santa Barbara, but grease is responsible and roots are responsible. However, third slide, wet weather, inflow, INI, is the volume, when it rains, this is when you see all the rotor routers running around, drilling out roots and sending down into the storm main, these clumps that cause backup. And so while SSOs are clearly a problem, it's less clear about how to deal with private laterals. In Santa Barbara, we know that there, in some places, there are not even a lateral. They melted, they were orangeburgs that now pieces, that's why all the water gets in, is because they're not intact pipe from the house to the, to the main. Water Environment Research Foundation surveyed 26 water agencies that analyzed this issue and found on the average that the private sewer lateral account for 40% of total INI into the sewer system. Another survey, Water Environment Federation, that the municipalities found that half of them believe a range of 5% to 50% of their INI originate of private property. We will look forward to getting back to you with the end result of our report, and we're looking for some state help on the issue of laterals in this picture. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think Mr. White has a question for you. Is that correct? Okay.
Hello, Ms. Hauser. You said that the point-of-sale inspection of laterals didn't go over. Could you describe, be a little more specific on what didn't it go over, or what the over is?
Heck, no. The real estate, people really don't want to see point-of-sale anything, so we backed off of that. Hannah Beth Jackson knows that that is an issue as well. There is an issue of unfunded state mandates, you know, if you say, okay, point-of-sale has to happen, you know, who's paying for it? When a house sells, you have to know that the roof is there and that there are no termites, and money is changing hands. It's the easiest time to look at the plumbing under the house and see if it exists. And so we are going to look at this point-of-sale thing very seriously, because that's the time to catch a lot of the problem.
If I can just interject, just a little institutional memory here. When the ordinance was going through the city council about what to do with sewer laterals, it was a huge issue as part of the ordinance to, about the point-of-sale, and I think that's what Ms. Hauser was talking about, how that didn't go over very well. And that was part of the negotiations back and forth with the ordinance committee and the council at the time, not to include a point-of-sale mandate for sewer lateral replacement.
Okay, so that this is a, what you're discussing here is that mandate could occur at the state level or at the local level, is what I'm hearing. Is that right?
I think, Senator-elect.
I mean, with votes and all that, right?
Mayor Snyder, Councilman White. This is what Senator Jackson wants to revisit on a statewide level, so that we just don't get into this brouhaha locally, because it's a problem everywhere in the state, to investigate whether it can be added to the real estate form, the thing that has to be checked off before a house is sold.
Okay, thank you very much.
That make sense?
Yes, it does.
Thank you, Ms. Hauser. Mr. Hachkis?
Quick question. I think this is to your point, but I want to ask Ms. Bjork. It seemed to me that the issue, when we were back discussing at the ordinance level... It seemed to me that the issue, when we were back discussing at the ordinance level, was were sewer laterals really the problem that we thought they were? And as I remember, maybe I'm imagining this, but as I remember, I thought we came up with the conclusion that they weren't. Now, am I incorrect, or can you fill me in?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, sewer laterals are certainly a part of the puzzle. What happened, we did implement an ordinance, pretty far-reaching ordinance for the city of Santa Barbara, and it's still in place, that does require inspection of laterals under certain conditions. And that includes substantial expansion to the property, or if there's a known, a suspected problem. So, for instance, the spill that led better was caused by a suspected problem from a private lateral. That lateral will have to be inspected, and if necessary, repaired or replaced. So we still do have what's a pretty progressive ordinance for private laterals. The problem is that the triggers for it are sort of reactive rather than proactive. The extent to which laterals are a problem in our collection system is a little hard to evaluate. It's certainly a component. You saw that 9% of the spills were caused by roots, and some of those are caused by roots going into the sewer main, some are caused by roots dislodged. After the fact, it can be hard to tell which is which, unless we actually see the laterals coming, I mean, the roots coming out of the lateral. So it's certainly a part of the problem. I can tell you that we spend upwards of $5 million a year on maintaining our public infrastructure, and there's at least an equal mileage of private infrastructure.
So did you say 9% of the blockage was?
Nine of the 19 this year were, so more than half.
Okay. Because I know as a Realtor, what one often does is advises the buyer, be best to, or the seller either, in case, to inspect them, so you know what's coming, even if there's not anything that's compulsory right now. So that's the sort of advisory that Realtors use, although there isn't a mandate at this point.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I think that's true, and that was something the Realtor group was very forthcoming with. I think that one of the thoughts is that the roof inspection and termite inspections are informative of how people maintain their infrastructure, knowing that those are things that will be looked at. It helps people to justify the investment into their infrastructure, even when they may not be contemplating a sale. So having it be one of those things that's well-recognized as maintaining a property may increase people's understanding of the need to prevent problems in a lateral, rather than just defer responding to them.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to have more questions after we get through public comment. Thank you.
That was the only public comment, but.
Are we done?
Yeah, if you want to continue or wait.
I do. Okay, thank you. Have we found any, and maybe you're saying we're going to find, but have we found any systemic deficiencies in capacity? I think you touched on that, but it wasn't clear to me. I think you said that we had a 10-year rainstorm, we did fine. Am I right?
Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hotchkiss, my name is Chris Soth. I'm the wastewater system manager with the city. And that's correct. In the near term, we have very little in the way of capacity concerns. The wastewater system management plan we have, that involves capacity analysis, that model, that computer model, that goes out to the year 2050, and it comports with the city's general plan, population growth, and land use. And we see that we have some capacity issues potentially developing in later years, the year 2020 and beyond, and the year 2050, in that timeframe. But in the near term, the next 10 years or so, the next eight years, we have very little capacity concerns. So we're using this time period to focus on rehabilitating structural issues that we have with our existing system, and making sure that we don't spend that rehabilitation money on pipe that then, 10 years from now, we need to upsize.
Right. Would that increase 10 or 15 years out be because of a projected increase in population density in the city?
It does take into account the criteria used in the city's general plan, and so it does comport with those population growth projections.
Okay. Are all our pipes now pretty much clay?
The vast majority of them are. 75% of our system are 6-inch diameter and 8-inch diameter pipes, most of which are clay pipes. And they're on the order of 50 years old, or something on that order. But structurally, clay pipe is very sound, and it's an inert material, so that it does very well in terms of sewer gases. You know, it's not going to dissolve because it's being exposed to sewer gases, so.
And so, sorry, go ahead. When we replace them, what do we replace those pipes with?
Well, as we're focused primarily on rehabilitation, we're not replacing them at all. We're lining them with plastic-type material, fiberglass material, which then renews them for another lifetime, another 50 or more years. It's much less destructive to rehabilitate pipe than to replace it, because the conventional method for replacing pipe was open trench, where you actually have to cut open the street and dig out. There are new techniques involving pipe bursting and other methods that are much less intrusive, but it's far more expensive to replace a pipe than to line it. And so we're getting a lot of bang for our buck by being able to rehabilitate pipeline mileage today.
You said, or I think Ms. Bjork said at one point, the total mileage that we have in sewer pipes, but I missed it. Was it 200 and something miles?
It was 257 miles. And that's based on our current GIS system. And we've got that additionally refined. As we go forward, the council will find, when we come back and report, next year, for example, we might adjust that mileage slightly, because as we continue to develop and refine our geographic information system, we find things out about our pipes, and so the mileage might change slightly, but.
And so what percent are we inspecting annually now, with the, sort of like a pig that goes through the pipe, I guess you'd call it?
With the program we're putting in place now for our CCTV inspection program, we've set a goal to inspect our entire system in 10 years. So we're doing approximately 25 miles in calendar year 2013. And cleaning those miles and inspecting them, and then assessing those pipelines, so that we ensure that in the next five years, we're rehabilitating or repairing the worst-conditioned pipes, rather than just saying, hey, I found a bad pipe today, let's go fix it.
I understand. So that represents almost 10% of our total pipes that we're looking at every year?
That's correct.
Do we know, Mr. Armstrong, maybe you have an answer to this. Do we know how we compare with other cities that, you know, up and down the coast? I don't even know if that's a fair question, but.
Well, I have only got direct experience with another agency, but the results are similar in that the initial thought there was that, oh my gosh, we have a bunch of broken pipe, we better go find the broken pipe and fix it. And through that process, the agency learned that most of the problems were maintenance-related, and that, and they were expecting to find a whole bunch of structural problems with sewer mains. And as a result of that inspection process, and that was a 3,000-mile system where the agency, over an accelerated time period, inspected something on the order of 800 to 1,000 miles. They found the bulk of their problems were related to maintenance and not structural repairs or replacement that was needed. And we're experiencing that similar.
This is going to sound like a bizarre question, but in the interest of transparency, are these TV inspections available to the public online? Not something I think would be getting a huge audience, but.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, they're not available online. It's just an infrastructure management, they're on a dedicated database, and they'd be hard to watch, but they're certainly no secret. People are welcome to watch them, they're scintillating. I did want to respond to the issue about how do we compare to other agencies. Unfortunately, the best comparison is performance, and we're still working on that. However, I want to emphasize that the best management practices that we're putting in place are best management practices. We believe they are what are necessary to transform us to be a best-in-class system. It's just not happening overnight. We're hoping it will continue to go in the right direction, but there, you know, it's a significant change.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. House?
Thanks for the report. When I was out of the room, I was watching your report from the other office, just so you know, I didn't miss much. I really appreciate having this kind of a chance to hear how we're doing and hear your perspective. And I, from listening to Ms. Redmond, she seems completely under-impressed by our efforts. And it would be very, I think, useful to us and perhaps the public to hear some responses to the specifics that came, you know, come from her and from those who really share all of our concerns that we're doing the very best we possibly can. I know that this exfiltration issue, for instance, I mean, it's very interesting. It wasn't in anybody's radar several years ago, and then we go and discover ourselves, you know, that there's this potential for there to be this exfiltration from one system to another, and then we go after it, but then that becomes public knowledge, and now that becomes the basis of a lawsuit. And it's like, oh, great, no good deed goes unpunished, you know? But here we are now trying to be not just reactive, but be proactive. And so a couple of questions, and maybe you'd like to respond to some of the things that we've heard. This cleaning regimen, this maintenance issue, it appears that by changing practices in the field of how pipes are cleaned and how we maintain the system was a big step towards resolving many of the problems that we had over the years, up until maybe about a year and a half or two years ago. Am I understanding correctly, and maybe you could explain a little more about that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, yes, we have changed our business practice or field practice of how we clean pipe. We're much more rigorous, we're much more thorough, we're much more standardized. I can go into some detail of that, but we're much more effective in how we're cleaning our system today. And that has resulted in a great reduction of what we would call maintenance-related SSOs and stoppages. And that is, I think, borne out on the slides. As we've talked about putting in a lot of plans, you know, you saw the various plans we put together. We spent a lot of the last calendar year working with our consultant to develop them and write them, and now they're being implemented. And so it takes time for an organization to change. You can't write, you know, hundreds of pages of documentation and plop it down on a desk and say, Eureka, we finished the plan, now we're successful. We actually have to carry out those best management practices, implement them, learn them. You know, it's a system, it's a management system. And so we're confident and we're positive that in the coming year, we'll do better. Will we do 15? I think we'll be in that ballpark. I mean, I'm very hopeful that we'll do much better than 15. But it's not something you can literally dial in. You can't say, let's just do this level of effort and dial down to that level, unless you're going to spend an exorbitant amount of money.
And you're under great pressure to implement as quickly as you possibly can, I imagine.
Yes, we are. And city staff has done a fantastic job of accepting change and changing a lot of the business practices and regimens that we've learned over the years. And I think our performance is very good, despite we haven't met a particular goal.
When did those changes start?
In early 2010.
Okay. And then the, one of the things that was said, I don't remember which of the speakers mentioned it, but the rotor router goes out there and, you know, roots out the sewer lateral, and the little pieces and bits of the roots get down into the main system. Is that a problem for us?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, yes, it is. And as this recent incident of the Leadbitter Beach SSO relates, yes, that was principally the cause of that particular SSO. Yet we acknowledge that there are a lot of sewer laterals that connect to the city's sewer system. There's approximately 24,000 sewer laterals in the city of Santa Barbara. And we are not staffed to effectively monitor each and every one of those laterals. Now, we're thinking of ideas of how to coordinate better with plumbers, but even in the best case, where you literally try to set up a system where private plumbers contact you when they're going out to rotor router someone's sewer lateral, so that you can hopefully dispatch a crew to be in the proximity to catch debris that enters immediately downstream of that sewer main. That's a very expensive process, and we're not equipped at the current time to do that.
I see, and there's no practices, or no ordinances, or things that we could do here from the city council that would support that, maybe it would really, something that would be enforceable for the private sector to actually have best practices, where that when they do root out those laterals, that they don't cause a problem for the public at large?
Councilmember House, we are certainly willing to coordinate and network with private plumbers here in the community and get their input and ideas of what they could do to support us. As a general rule, we don't like people opening up manhole covers in the middle of the street and doing stuff with it, because that can cause all sorts of other problems, including traffic control problems and risks to the public. But we're certainly willing to continue down this path to figure out what we can do to coordinate with drain cleaners and plumbing contractors.
Okay. We're trying to problem solve here a little, last little thing I have, and then maybe there's some responses you have to some of the things you've heard. On the sewer lateral, the private side of this equation, we did get pretty far down the road, and we actually had what I thought was a rather remarkable opportunity that was picked up on by the private sector with, at first, some reluctance, but then some great gusto, and it became so successful that I recall that we had to pull it. And that was, we had an incentive-based program, which is way the opposite of just a reaction, and way the opposite of having an unfunded mandate. And it was well-received and embraced. And I think we ran into our own budgetary issues, where we wanted to use those same funds to replace and maintain the mains that the city is responsible for under the streets. And I was very sad to see that program go away. And now in terms of effectiveness in dealing, as Ms. Hauser's talking about, with sewer laterals on private property, I don't know that we had anything or, I mean, we could think of anything more effective than that if we had the resources, the financial resources to maintain or to continue it. Do you agree with that assessment? Am I on the right track with that thought process?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, if we had the resources, certainly it was a wonderful program. Even so, it would have taken a long time to work its way through the entire city's sewer system with laterals. My recollection is that at the time we stopped that practice, we were spending approximately $900,000 a year on incentives for property owners to renew or rehabilitate their sewer laterals. We also noticed during that time period that plumbing contractors had raised their rates, so that what have caused, cost $3,000 or $4,000 for a sewer lateral now is costing $5,000 or so. And so there was some sort of inflation going on in terms of where the city incentive money actually was going. Now, we are learning now of other communities that are looking to the private sector, similar to homeowners' insurance, where there could be the potential for insurers to come in and offer private lateral insurance to communities and some sort of funding mechanism to allow private property owners to afford that type of work to be done without, you know, the city actively paying money. But this is really exploratory level. But we're looking for creative mechanisms that way that might help.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for remembering the effectiveness, though, of the incentive. It wasn't just a pay-for-the-whole-thing, it was a partial, you know, enough just to offset a little bit of it. And if Ms. Jackson or somebody in Sacramento wants to create a, some sort of an incentive-based program, we know that it would be effective. There were hundreds of them getting inspected where we thought there would be a few, and kept doubling the program. Maybe, do you want to respond to any of those things, the really, truly under-impressed reaction that you got today from all these efforts that we have? Is there anything in particular you'd want to respond to in that? Not to just create a tit-for-tat, but I mean, there must be something to.
Well, you know.
Give you an opportunity.
Well, we certainly appreciate Channel Keeper's comments.
Yeah, so do we.
And we are very willing to partner with Channel Keeper in the future. I think in many ways, the past year, as attorney-like, litigious as it may have seemed, was a dialogue. And in many ways, it's been a constructive dialogue. You know, in terms of exfiltration program activities, I think the city has put in place a great plan to address exfiltration issues. As Ms. Bjork has said, we've done a certain number of miles already this calendar year. The city believes that we have reached a cap, a financial cap associated with the consent decree, that Channel Keeper does not believe we've reached. That's not a technical issue, that is a legal issue. And so I leave that to others to resolve. But we're clearly planned for calendar year 2013 to address a significant number of pipes in the Laguna watershed, some of the oldest part of our collection system, which would alleviate concerns from all citizens. alleviate concerns from all citizens about the potential exfiltration from sewer mains into storm drains in that area. Same time, calendar year 2013, we are televising 25 miles of pipe, all of which are pipes that could potentially be part of this exfiltration program. And so, then, we'll be set up for calendar year 2014 to spend funds to rehabilitate those pipes, as well as investigate or televise additional pipes. We feel that within the next three to four years, we'll have all of the potential high-risk pipes, or pipes that could be potentially associated with exfiltration, addressed. From an agency perspective, that's a very aggressive agenda. And I feel proud of the work that city staff has done to get us to this point, and now to continue forward. And if required, because it was deemed to be a violation of the consent decree, and we went before a federal magistrate, I feel very confident of our ability to communicate our effectiveness and the work that we've not only performed to date, but that what we're planning to do in the next several years, that would meet that test that's required of us by the consent decree.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, as I read through the material, both by Heal the Ocean and from the C A R, would it be anecdotal, or do we have actual data on whether or not the bulk of our SSOs are the result of a private lateral, city main interface? Or is that, or can you put some kind of a number on that?
Well, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, as Heal the Ocean said, their presentation, actually, from a national average, focused a primary cause being fat soil and grease, as opposed to roots. But here in our community, it's roots more than grease. And so, as Ms. Bjork put forward in the presentation, nine of the 19 spills, I believe, were root-related. A little more than half, some fraction of those are caused by private laterals. But we are still in the learning mode of fine-tuning our system to eliminate roots or to maintain roots in a way through our maintenance practices so that they don't grow so fast as to cause blockages and spills. So, I could guess that maybe, you know, one of nine, two of nine, maybe three of nine in a given year, root spills are related to private laterals. But clearly, we still have work to do within our own system.
Well, and I wonder if they're good to the public as well. I know that I had one of the Orangeburg laterals out of my house that collapsed along with all my neighbors, even with about the same two weeks. But if you could define exactly for the viewing public where the private and the public responsibility ends in terms of, you know, the main, the hub into the street, or where exactly all that goes, and what sort of homeowner, were they responsible for replacing their lateral, or a business owner, where it begins and ends?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, the private property owner is responsible for their sewer lateral, both the maintenance of it and the structural integrity of it, all the way from the house connection through their private property to where it connects to the city sewer main. Now, because the city is very interested in maintaining the integrity of the city sewer system, the way our program currently works, our licensed plumbers would contact the city and work with us through the permit process, so that city staff would go to the connection point with the city sewer main and the private lateral and actually make or renew that connection. So, the city staff would get involved with that Y connection to the city sewer main. But from that, you know, from that connection point upward to the house or residence, that's the responsibility of the private property owner.
So typically, when you look out on your street and you see the manhole cover, and there's a main running down the middle of the street...
Typically.
Is there already an established Y, or does that have to be developed when a lateral goes in? So where does the private responsibility stop? Is it all the way to the hub of actually the main pipe of the sewer, or is it Y out into another hub? That's what I'm trying to communicate.
It's at the point of connection where that Y piece touches the sewer main. It's actually one piece of pipe that's a Y, but where that Y connects to the city main, that's the private property owner's responsibility.
So the private property comes all the way right to the main pipe going down the middle of the street?
That's my understanding.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to know if we are in violation of the consent decree. And Ms. Redmond's numbers seem pretty clear, right? Two miles of replacement in 2012, and she said we didn't get there. And do I need to ask Mr. Wiley?
I think this is the Mr. Wiley question.
Madam Mayor, the answer is no. We've looked at this in detail. We've consulted with our outside attorney, we've gone over it with our staff, and we're in full compliance with the consent decree. And Channel Keeper and their lawyers, and the lawyers are the first ones who have argued otherwise, have been arguing that we're not. We're trying to work that out with them cooperatively, but we're pretty convinced that we're in full compliance with the consent decree.
Well, I would like to ask Ms. Redmond for a copy of whatever it was that you showed up there. It went by kind of fast. And I mean, I would really like to get to the bottom of this. I mean, you're saying one thing, they're saying the other, and I guess it's a legal question, but there's some numbers there that seem sort of absolute, and it's definitely my business to figure out what's going on here. And we've been going through this process, trying to make peace and do the right thing, and it was a huge legal issue, and it's so disappointing to be at this point where we're having this conflict, and we're not in agreement when I think brilliant people are trying to make this all work. And I'll just close by saying, I think in the future that Channel Keeper should get more than a few days' notice to put their report together. That seems like a short time, and then...
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario.
I'm sorry, I'm not done. That if we're trying to maintain friendly relationships, then giving her two weeks, you know, might seem like a friendly gesture. I'm done.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, Ms. Redmond was notified in June of the general timeframe of this presentation. So she's been aware that it's been coming up for a long time, and there was no intention to give her a short-time notice, and I'm sorry that it didn't work out to her. But, you know, we've been working, the city added this into the consent decree as a way of making sure that the public was aware of what was going on, and offered Channel Keeper the time to provide their presentation. So I'm sorry it caught her unawares, it was unintentional, but, you know, it's been out there for a number of months. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The spills that occurred, did they occur, was there, I'm hearing that roots in the laterals, as well as roots in the mains, were at least two of the causes of spills? Was it, and the city's focus, both the consent decree focus is on the public pipes, not on the laterals. Do we see a pattern? Is there any pattern in where the spills occurred? Did the spills occur in the suspected worst pipes? Or was it, I mean, I can picture a bad lateral on a good pipe as being a candidate for a spill, and I'm just interested in knowing if you were able to generate any kind of picture of what that history was.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, we looked at the distribution, and we've looked at each spill on a case-by-case basis, and I'm afraid I don't have the pipe condition for every single spill. I can tell you the Leadbitter spill was a pipe that had been rehabilitated, so the city pipe was in good condition. So, you know, we're continuing, it doesn't, when the roots grow into the city pipe, it doesn't matter if they came from a lateral, it's still the city's spill because it blocks our pipe. So, that's one of the things we're working to address through our maintenance practices is, you know, with a newer pipe, we expect to have to maintain it less frequently, but we have to factor in the issue of, is there another element there, such as the lateral?
Right. And then, it sounds like this history has occurred, but, and I'm not aware of it, of the, there was at least a look at the point of sale, and I see the mayor nodding his head.
It was a very big look, yes.
I'm sure it was a big look. But what is the, do we know what the number, what is the number of sales that occur per year in the city? Do we have a sense of that? Maybe Mr. Hotchkiss knows that.
Putting me on the spot here.
Two hundred, 300 sales a year?
Yeah, yes, depends on a good year or not, but...
Yeah, but I mean, just decade in, decade out, 300 or so a year, so that's...
Five or 600 properties on the market, usually at one time, although we're in a low area of eb right now.
You said there are 20,000 laterals?
24,000 laterals.
Okay, so that's 1% a year that is, goes through the transaction process. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Francisco?
Just one question. In the map that you showed of the distribution of SSOs, that was a fairly random-looking distribution. But is there a correlation between those spills and vegetation density? I don't know exactly how you'd express that, but...
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, one thing I do want to bring up is, yeah, there's a correlation between spills and vegetation, but there's also a correlation between roots going into the sewer system and weather. And we've had a dry year. So when it's dry, the roots go looking for water, and so that we do see an increase in roots in sewer systems in dry years.
Okay, interesting. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss, do you have another question?
No, I need to correct what I was saying. I think that the 20 a month is low. No, it's going to be more like 80 or 90 sales a month, so the figures, yeah.
That's our recollection, it's about 1,000 sales a year.
I would have been hung if I hadn't corrected that.
Well, first off, thank you for the report. And, you know, I think it said, as Ms. Howser said, if we had the funding to go through all the laterals with the rebate program, Mr. House said as well, we'd do it. It was extreme, it was too popular in some ways. And perhaps there's a statewide solution to that, and I'm really appreciative that our new state senator, Hannah Beth Jackson, has already reached out to you. I don't know through, is it Prop 84? Or, I mean, there's a lot of clean water bond money, maybe that's a way through some, you know, that's money that's set aside for this kind of thing, if this would qualify for those kind of grants, I'm sure. Our staff and working with you and the senator's office, you know, if there's something that can happen on a statewide basis, I know we'd be interested in that because it's one pie in terms of the budget. And I think that was the concern when we reluctantly withdrew the incentive program was because we needed to focus on the city pipe that only the city is responsible for, as opposed to a number of property owners. So I think, I appreciate hearing that you're looking at different alternatives as well. And, you know, we went through a, you know, relatively pretty hefty rate increase this past year, up to 10%, to 6% of that 10% being, you know, to conform with this consent decree. I think that's something to keep in mind. And, you know, there are issues brought up that, I'm not going to get into stuff that happened in closed session, I just hope that they can be resolved. And unfortunately, it does mean dealing with attorneys, but that's part of what the consent decree, if you read it, says needs to occur if there's a disagreement about interpretation of the consent decree. So hopefully, that will be resolved soon. I, what did I, the short notice issue, I know that you, you know, you said back in June, and that message got across, and, you know, that was unfortunate. And so, I know in the future that communication lines will come back and forth, and we'll make sure that you have a little more notice there. But I do have to say, we do want to move forward, and we want to solve this problem. And I don't think anyone in this room doesn't want to solve the problem. So I do have to say that, you know, to imply or give the impression that this staff doesn't care or is inattentive to what we're trying to do here, the amount of work, I know just by going to L.A., dealing with the consent decree and then beyond, has been tremendous. And you've done a lot of work, and I know you're doing everything you can under the budget that you have to reduce the sewer spills. And I would just appreciate moving forward. We do want to work with the whole community, but, you know, to characterize staff as being inattentive or having an attitude about it really, I think, is erroneous. It doesn't help, it creates a contentious environment, and I think we can disagree, but do it in a way that's constructive rather than destructive. And that's all I ask. And I just think some of the tone that was brought up, Ms. Redmond, was a little unfortunate. And so, I hope that we can deal with the facts and not dealing with personality issues. And that, to me, is very important because I think we all want to solve the problem. So I think we can do that, and I think you have a very aggressive program for 2013, and much more than this department's ever seen. So that's something to look forward to, and hopefully, we'll see results. I think, as was mentioned before, some of those spills, you could rehab every single line tomorrow, and you could have an error, or the sewer laterals will be an issue, or something could happen, and, you know, you still have a spill. So we're going to do everything we can to reduce the number of spills and get to the bottom of it. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to thank you for saying that, and really appreciative of the way you phrased it. And I would say to Channel Keepers or anybody who wants to improve things, that it sure helps to hear in your criticisms and acknowledgement and appreciation for what the opposition, if I could put it that way, may be doing. It makes it a lot easier for people to listen to what you're saying. And if you can't find that, then don't be surprised if you get something of a negative reaction from people here or in the city. And I'm quite sure the mayor is right in saying that this staff, particularly this water staff, is a tremendous bunch of professionals and are for sure doing everything they can to make this right. And so, I hope the next time you come to speak, that you will thank them for their efforts and say, but still, we perhaps have more to do, but you have some sense of appreciation for what they've done so far. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, and I did not in my comments say anything about my own passion for this city having a clean system. It certainly, in history, is there with the Clean Creeks program that we have, that the city invests a goodly amount of money in. And I appreciate both Mr. Hotchkiss and Ms. Schneider's comments on just our need and our desire to move forward in a positive way. I did want to make one comment. I think there are two important elements here that Mr. House alluded to, one of them, and that is the amazing work that our own Creeks Division did to research, to do detective work, to come up with this relationship between our storm drains and our sewer system, which is, had not been done other places, and this was really a revolutionary piece of work. And, of course, yet it did become part of the legal action, which was really sad. It also solved a couple of nagging pollution problems, and I just, that was a good effort, and I know it's one that we're going to continue to do well on, or at least pursue. And so, it's a positive piece of work that the city, creative work that the city has done, that I think needs to at least be acknowledged. And secondly, there really were problems with the lateral program that haven't been alluded to here, and that is, it was porky in structure. The incentive was to do the work. This thing out there, and obviously, we heard that the rates for our plumbers went up. I mean, not only that, but there were, I assure you that there were lots of, I mean, it's a little bit like the health problem that we have where the doc doesn't get paid unless that patient goes and has a whole bunch of x-rays and tests. Well, in this situation, the plumber doesn't get paid unless that lateral goes in. Well, guess what? Those laterals went in. And, oh, there's a, you know, there's a nick in there, and this thing is 40 years old, so let's put in a new lateral and get the big subsidy. So the structure of that thing was not healthy. And we need, you know, that's the, you know, part of this, you know, and I appreciate that there's real concern... there's real concern by the realty community on the point-of-sale issue. But at least structurally, what we've found in the real estate business is that some of those point-of-sale activities are very functional. We obviously have the zoning information report, it's one of those areas. It's hot, it's controversial, but it does, in its imperfect way, drive to the development toward compliance. So there's structurally is something to that. A thousand a year, that would start to make a difference in the quality of laterals. And as I say, I know that that's going to be a, it would be a hot topic, but we need to be looking for structural ways for this to occur, not just creating porky programs that waste money. We need, obviously, money is short. We need to have the mains rehabilitated in a timely way as well, which obviously is a key feature of the Channel Keeper effort. Anyway, I wanted to make those, have those two points out there because as folks watch this, perhaps they might get a better, a broader picture of the commitment that this city has to clean water. Thank you.
Mr. House?
You know, if this weren't so important, we'd all probably just sit here and take the report and just accept it and say thank you very much. I just want to add a couple of things. One, to Ms. Mario's, sort of the sentiment of her remarks, I think that it would be, I would feel it would be very welcome for me to know if we were not in compliance, if for some reason we were not able to fulfill our obligations. It's, I have to trust that she would be candid, share that with us. We'd get it out, we'd put the fix in, we'd make it right. We'd, you know, we'd do that. But it wouldn't be something that we would hold back. So I just want to make sure that whatever we do, whatever happens, that we continue to have that kind of candor in our conversation so that we know if we're making it, if we're not. If we're not, what do we need to do to make it right? And I think that that needs to continue to be the tone and tenor of our conversation internally here in the city itself. And if the information comes from an outside source, that's just great. You know, thank you very much, appreciate that. It should come from within if we can find it ourselves first. So I want to make sure that that points out there. The second one is that I think that, and this is to all of us, and thank you, Madam Mayor, thank Mr. Hotchkiss and Mr. White. This environment of an adversarial relationship is maybe necessary at some point, but we can grow beyond that. And the critical moment we are in right now is we need cooperation. We need to do better than to just merely comply. We have such a wealth, as Ms. Mario says, wealth of knowledge here, and all of us share a common commitment to this community and to the health of the oceans and the creeks and all the rest. So I would like to see us work on some of these fine points, as Mr. White's saying. It's not, it wasn't intended to be a porky system, but it sort of ended up that way. There's a better way to do it. And it would meet what Ms. Howser's talking about. I mean, there's, we're just the tip of the iceberg compared to the whole rest of California, all of which are facing similar issues. Were we to come up with something that would be a better solution, that would meet the, that would have that incentive feeling so you don't have arms twisted in the real estate community, it becomes a natural part of doing business and everybody benefits, that'd be pretty cool. But that's going to require a cooperative spirit. And I would really like to get to where, not just a feel-good thing, but I mean, an actual results-based, we're doing better than just comply. And I really would ask for Channel Keeper and of course, Seal the Ocean, that we keep that relationship and build on it and not just keep going back to the adversarial thing because I think that will actually hold us back. You need the esprit de corps, you need the sense of we're working together to really, you know, go beyond where we are right now. But anyway, thank you very much for your report and thanks for the participation from everyone.
Okay, there's no motion necessary. Thank you very much. Move on to item number 16.
Appointments to city advisory groups.
Okay, so how this will work, just as a reminder, we'll go through the advisory committee names. And if anyone would like to make a nomination, please do so. After those nominations are cast, then we'll have the clerk do a roll call and we'll vote. If there's, there can be a motion by acclamation, if there's, if there's just one nomination in one spot, we can do it that way. And first, if anyone's listening, actually, I just want to say, this particular time, there were a lot more candidates than spots open and actually, a lot of great candidates. So not everyone's going to get a spot and thank you all for applying. And if you don't get it this time, try again. It's really amazing to see the wealth of what people want, you know, volunteer time, people want to give to the city. It's quite impressive. So, okay, with that, I will start with the Access Advisory Committee.
Acclamation.
Move DeGasse's by acclamation. Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Airport Commission, any nominations?
Carl Hopkins.
Any other nomination?
John Busby.
Okay, we have all three. I was going to nominate Khan. Right, we got that. So if we can have a vote, please.
Councilmember Francisco.
Hopkins.
Hotchkiss.
Hopkins, can we only vote on one?
Yes, there's, there's only one, because they're all in the county, there's not a city elector.
Got it, okay, Hopkins, please.
House.
Khan.
Mario.
Khan.
Rouse.
Busby.
White.
Busby.
Mayor Schneider.
Khan.
We have three votes for Khan and two each for Hopkins and Busby. So I believe that we need to have at least four votes for one of these people.
Correct.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Hotchkiss?
May I, in support of Mr. Hopkins, say that he is, I think, coming up again and has done a good job and is highly spoken of there at that commission?
I don't think he's an incumbent. You would say so if it was.
It was in the past, I think, though.
And I think Ms. Khan was as well, and I would say the same thing about her.
And Madam Mayor, I'll just chip in for Ms. Khan. Nothing against any of the other applicants, but her wealth of experience on the Airport Commission has really borne fruit in the past. She really knows the lay of the land and the air and has been a really competent representative in the past. And she has set, she's set it out for the last couple of years.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am very enthusiastic about Mr. Busby being involved. He's, he does, particularly in the landlord-tenant world, he's just top-notch. However, just in the interest of moving this forward, I would change my support to Ms. Khan, as she certainly is. All, we were blessed with having just three top-notch folks. I wish one, at least one of them lived in the city so that we could get two of these folks on board. But I would be willing to switch my vote to Ms. Khan.
So if Mr. Hopkins or Busby are listening, check the sewer laterals in the city and the house you're going to move into and apply again. That would be great. Okay, so Ms. Khan. Thank you for that, that was hard. Architectural Board of Review.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
We need an action on the other vacancy for.
There's, I see none, no applicants who are qualified for the city position. For the Airport Commission, is that what you're talking about?
Right, uh-huh. I have Mr. Arcuri listed here.
He's not in our staff report as someone who showed up for.
Okay, all right.
That's okay. Architectural Board of Review, any nominations? Well, let's do the, well, actually, I believe there are three vacancies. I believe they're professional experience in related fields, but I do believe anyone can fit in any of the, well, Anthony and Smith can only fit in the related field because they're not architects, but the others could fit in the related, the first category. Does that make sense? Okay, let's, why don't we just start first with the nominations? We'll see.
Well, Madam Mayor, if I could just try on that. You're saying that, that folks in the lower chunk could also qualify for the, for the upper chunk as well.
But not vice-versa, as I understand it.
Correct.
Right, so there, there are two positions and professional experience in related fields, and everyone on the list could qualify for that, let's do it that way. There's one position open for the licensed architect, professional experience in related fields, public at large. Oh, so everyone can qualify for everything then?
That's a job, too.
All right, so forget all that. So nominations.
Nominate Anthony Kung.
Whitash.
Hold on. Whitash, Anthony, did you say Anthony?
I said Anthony Kung Hopkins.
Anthony Kung and Hopkins, and also Whitash. Any other nominations?
Whitash.
We already have, just nominations at this point. So we have Anthony, Kung, Hopkins, and Whitash. Any other nominations?
And Smith.
And Smith. Any other nominations? Okay, so as I believe we can vote for three. Okay, so now we have the vote.
Councilmember Francisco.
Smith and Whitash.
Hotchkiss.
Smith, Kung, and Whitash.
House.
Anthony Kung, Hopkins.
Mario.
Anthony, Kung, Hopkins.
Rouse.
Whitash, Smith, Hopkins.
White.
Anthony, Kung, Whitash.
I know, there we go. I'm going to go Hopkins, Kung, and Whitash.
We have five votes for Whitash and Kung and four votes for Hopkins.
Okay, so that should do it. Okay. Civil Service Commission. Move Gabriel Garcia by acclamation?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Community Development and Human Services Commission, it looks like there's one slot per category.
Madam Mayor, I move the entire group of them, Just Cook, Kazada, Kazala, ah, can't say his name, and Rorty, Gorga, and Jacobson. Boy, it shouldn't even bother, by acclamation.
Should we repeat the motion?
Everyone know the motion?
Acclamation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Downtown Parking Committee.
Move by acclamation.
Move Librian McNee by acclamation. There's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Fire and Police Commission, any nominations?
Torre Santos.
Any, move by acclamation?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fire and Police Pension Commission. Move Jacobs by acclamation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Harbor Commission, one vacancy.
Madam Mayor.
Spicer.
Okay, nominate Spicer, Mr. Hotchkiss, yes?
I was just going to say, my friend Bill Cordero would be great here, but I think we should honor Mr. Spicer's return, and so I want to support that.
So you want to move Spicer by acclamation?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Historic Landmarks, we, just to remind us that Mr. Schallenberger is an incumbent and, and I think, let me bring this up now because this is, there's another commission with the same situation, is I understand the resolution, if there is still a vacancy after we make our vote, an incumbent who may want to continue may do so, but would have to reapply in the spring and come back for an interview along with everyone else, and we would make that decision at that point. Or if we filled the vacancies with those that you see here, then the incumbent would obviously have to leave. So just to put that out there. First off, though, the professional architectural historian, there's only one applicant who is eligible, so I would.
Murray by acclamation.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So now we have the other position.
And Madam Mayor, I support Schallenberger, but I suppose we're not voting on, if I wanted to support him, I would just not vote.
Just be quiet.
So what would happen would be, I would ask if there were any nominations, and if there's silence, we would just move on to the next one. So are there any nominations? Okay, so we move on to the Library Board. Any nominations?
Nayler.
Nominate McMaster.
Okay, let's have a vote.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Nayler.
House.
Nayler.
Mario.
Nayler.
Rouse.
Nayler.
White.
Nayler.
Mayor Schneider.
Nayler.
Councilmember Francisco.
McMaster. There's always one.
We have plans for McMaster. We like McMaster, she was good. Measure P Committee.
David Bierman.
David Bierman.
Bierman by acclamation.
We got a shoe in here.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
He needs a committee, anyway. Metropolitan Transit District Board, now there are two vacancies, any nominations?
Nominate Britton and Rodriguez.
Any other nomination?
Nominate Tabor.
Any other nominations? Okay, let's have a vote.
Councilmember House.
Rodriguez and Britton.
Mario.
Rodriguez, Tabor.
Rouse.
Britton, Rodriguez.
White.
Rodriguez, Tabor.
Mayor Schneider.
Rodriguez, Tabor.
Councilmember Francisco.
Britton, Rodriguez.
And Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Britton, Tabor.
I think we have a runoff between Britton and Tabor. So Rodriguez has one of the slots.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Rodriguez got one of the slots, she has six votes, and it's a tie between Tabor and Britton. So we have a runoff.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Francisco.
I just wanted to say something on behalf of Mr. Britton, who was a longtime servant to this community and is positioned with Edison and has served, as you can see here, for nearly sixteen years on this board and has done an outstanding job, I think, in the estimation of everyone currently on that board. And so, again, I want to reiterate my support for John Britton.
Madam Mayor, at the same time that I recognize Mr. Britton's service, I think that's also an argument why we should choose some fresh blood, that he's been there for sixteen years. I really honor him. I go to those meetings, he's done a great job. I just think we need somebody new. And Mr. Tabor is so qualified and had served on the TCC, gave us a great presentation, looking to the future of an aging population using the bus, which really spoke to me as I'm aging. So thank you.
Okay, I don't think anyone will deny the effectiveness and appreciation we have from Mr. Britton. It's, yeah, I agree with you with that, about that. Okay, the vote.
Councilmember Mario.
Tabor.
Rouse.
Britton.
White.
Tabor.
Mayor Schneider.
Tabor.
Councilmember Francisco.
Britton.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Britton.
And House.
This is nice when it goes around and I'm not the last vote all the time. It's nice.
All right, John, you've done a great job, buddy. Sixteen years almost, but we're going to let Dave Tabor have a chance at it.
Okay, Mr. Tabor. Okay. Neighborhood Advisory Council.
Fox and by acclamation.
There's a second? There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Parks and Recreation Commission, similar situation as with HLC, so are there any nominations? Okay, we'll move on to the Planning Commission. Any nominations?
Nominate Pujo and Lodge.
Pujo and Lodge, any other nominations?
Madam Mayor, move by acclamation, Pujo and Lodge.
There's a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, wait, any other nominations? Back up, back up.
Yeah, Jay Rollins nominated, please.
Okay, all right, so let's have a vote, so you can vote for two.
Councilmember Rouse.
Lodge, Rollins.
White.
Lodge, Pujo.
Mayor Schneider.
Lodge, Pujo.
Councilmember Francisco.
Lodge, Rollins.
Hotchkiss.
Lodge, Rollins.
House.
Pujo, Lodge.
And Mario.
Pujo, Lodge.
We have Mayor La, I'm sorry, Sheila Lodge reappointed, but we have, and we have four votes for Pujo, so it's, yes.
Okay, Rental Housing Mediation Task Force, there's two homeowners, two slots, one landlord, one slot, I would move those by acclamation. Beck, Dullum, and Axelrod?
Simult.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the tenant position, any nominations?
Jay Rollins.
I also want to nominate McMaster, so if we can have a vote, please.
Councilmember White.
McMaster.
Mayor Schneider.
McMaster.
Councilmember Francisco.
McMaster.
Hotchkiss.
Rollins.
House.
McMaster.
Mario.
Rollins.
And Rouse.
McMaster.
Okay, it's McMaster.
Thank you. Santa Barbara Youth Council, we have unfortunately two positions for only one spot. Any nominations?
Nominate Delacruz.
Any other nominations?
Flores is the youth council recommendation.
Are you nominating Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so can we have a vote? Vote for one.
Mayor Schneider, I'm sorry, Councilmember White.
Flores.
Mayor Schneider.
Flores.
Councilmember Francisco.
Flores.
Hotchkiss.
Flores.
House.
Flores.
Mario.
Flores.
Rouse.
Flores.
Okay, Sister Cities Board, move by acclamation, DeGasse and Ellis?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Transportation Circulation Committee, three vacancies, any nominations?
Aldana.
Aldana, any other nomination?
France.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, so we can choose three out of that, the whole four names there?
Oh, yes, because the other two, because they, the other two slots are qualified electors of the city or the county, and they certainly qualify for that.
Has Burnham been nominated?
No, not yet.
Burnham, please?
Any other nominations?
Bosch.
Okay, so there's a vote, you can vote for three.
Mayor Schneider.
Bosch, Burnham, and France.
Councilmember Francisco.
Aldana, Burnham.
Aldana, Burnham, France.
Bosch, Burnham, France.
Mario.
She pronounces it Boche.
Boche, thank you.
Boche, Burnham, France.
Rouse.
Aldana, Boche, Burnham.
And White.
Boche, Burnham, France.
We have Boche, Burnham, and France.
Water Commission?
Move by acclamation.
There's a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
We didn't want to say their names out loud.
Oh, sorry, Newstead and Rees.
Rees.
Okay, that's all of them. Any Councilmember Committee assignment reports? Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Housing Authority Commission last week, and Villa, Lacumbra, and Schiffco are being remodeled, so some of the residents came out in force and wanted to make sure that they would be accommodated during the remodeling, and it was kind of cool to see the people rise up. And then also related to the Housing Authority Commission, Margie Trejo has just retired, and we went to a nice party for her, and I think she's done an excellent job for them working in family services. And then this morning, I was at the Milpus Action Task Force meeting, and we discussed the area around Casa Esperanza, where Casa would do outreach, and then there's a new group, the Common Ground, so it's sort of the faith community, and some volunteers, led by Jeff Schaefer, who are putting together a program of volunteers to patrol and do outreach in farther-away areas from the shelter that may be impacted by some of their residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
A little bit different, I went, a little bit different, I went to the groundbreaking for the new Surgical Arts Center, I guess we'd call it, in the old Bank of America building in 1722 State Street, which in six months should be up and running, so it's a wonderful opportunity for a new sort of medical clinic right on State Street and in the heart of town.
Okay. Did you, Mr. House?
Just a couple of things real quick, just, Mr. Rouse and I were at the Downtown Organization this morning and had a chance to really appreciate their staff and all the members of the very active board for putting on a phenomenal parade, and it was really a chance to thank them, they did a great job, and I think we all enjoyed ourselves. I've got, let's see, a couple of things coming up. At Beacon, the notice of preparation has gone out for the environmental impact report for the plastic bag, single-use bag ban, and for the region, for Ventura County and Santa Barbara County, and there are more jurisdictions that have added their names, so that's moving forward. And the South Coast Homeless Advisory Committee, with which I'm a co-chair, we're just about, we may be our last meeting this week, possibly in January, depending on when the Central Coast Coordinating Committee, C3H, takes over, but we'll be handing off our recommendations to the committee after this meeting, from our several years of work on behalf of those concerned about homelessness, so that's wrapping up.
Great. I want to commend the waterfront staff on a great parade of lights over the weekend,